I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Village Board for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Fran?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Penacola?
Here.
That's six.
At this time, we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, we have two. Bruno Bellis?
Bellissimo, Bellissimo.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Village Board. My name is Bruno Bellissimo. I reside at sixty-seven seventy-three Ionia in Skokie. I was a former Finance Director of the Village here. I would like to ask approval for additional time to speak. I believe I have three minutes, if this is possible.
You have three minutes.
Three minutes, that's it? Okay. Is that start now?
Yep.
Twenty-seven seconds in.
Okay. I held the position of Finance Director for the Village for about ten weeks, and I just wanted to speak to the Village Board this evening regarding information that I documented during my employment with the Village as unable to disclose this information due to fear of retaliation. This information involves some proprieties that were occurring, financial systems inadequacies and severe deficiencies in the Village's organizational structure that directly impact the ability for the Finance Department to perform the duties timely without compromise. You know, it's typical customary for Finance Director or Finance to prepare and issue financial reports to the Board on a regular basis, or either for to provide to the Village Manager to do that. I noticed at the time that it's been a while since the financials were provided to the Board, or any monthly or regular finances reports. I requested several times for from Evan Summers, Village Manager, about issuing reports, and he stated no, and I quote, "The Board members don't have college..."
You have one minute.
"...the Board members don't have college degrees and are incompetent in understanding the financial reports." The...during second week, you had a major systems upgrade that partially failed, caused major problems with the utility building, and it took approximately thirty days for me to be able to access any type of advanced reporting because it wasn't working, so I had to find other means to get the reports that I needed. And it was...thirty days was quite a long time, and it was virtually impossible to do the advanced reporting that's required for certain things. Attempted to get tech support to do it, I requested Evan for additional support, and the Village Manager did not provide any support, and we were basically left on our own.
That is three minutes. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Next one.
Nurkan?
I know we're gonna...if we try to say your last name, we're gonna apologize. But go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Abe Wangstner. I'm here with Nurkan. I am the manager over at the Bridgeway Senior Living Campus. Nurkan runs the Child Benserville Daycare, also on our property. We wanted to discuss, we've been having some issues, you know, since she started with us, getting proper signage on York Road. I know there was a zoning issue, but we looked at it, and it's a completely separate building. I guess in short, we wanted to know what we can do to kind of, you know, get a sign up for the daycare on York Road.
Curtis will handle that, right?
We provided it. I can provide it again.
Okay.
We've talked to him. So on your end, it seems like the nursing home and the daycare are together, but they're not. Like, they're separate buildings, they're different zoning, so that's where the confusion is.
That's not how it works in the zoning code. It's all one PUD. It's planned unit development. It's all one property. So you...we can walk through you how to do it, but yeah, we've explained this before.
I've asked for someone to come in.
I'll join that meeting.
Yeah.
If you guys don't mind, because I've asked someone to come in and show me what I could do over there. We're so inside.
Do me a favor. So get ahold of Mary, our assistant.
Okay.
Set up a meeting on a Friday, and I'll join them as well.
Thank you.
Okay?
All right.
Please, and we'll figure it out. Absolutely.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay? Anybody else?
No, that's it. And let's...Corey, you got any?
That concludes public comment. So, yeah, just give Mary a call in the morning, and then she'll check out my schedule and everybody's schedule, and we'll fit it in. As long as Friday works for you guys. Okay, perfect. That would conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three Village Board meeting?
Yeah, permission.
There are seconds?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of one million eight hundred nine thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars, seventy-one cents. Is there a motion to approve this warrant?
You have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and warrant is approved. There are no items that could set the agenda. One is an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III, Section Five of the Benserville Village Code, to reduce the number of Class A liquor licenses outstanding at any one time from four to three. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There being a motion, and a second, we have discussion.
Yeah, I'll take this one, Your Honor. So the Village gave a liquor license to a business that was trying to open on York Road by the name of Ironwood. That business never opened, so their lease has expired, and we are rescinding that license so we can control the number of liquor licenses. And down.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Community and Economic Development, one is an ordinance approving variations for a new electronic message sign within the existing monument sign at four hundred West Wood Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second?
Second.
Being a motion, and a second, we have discussion.
Yeah, so this is for St. Alexis Church. If, and hopefully we'll get a picture of it. The...there's an existing monument sign. It's got some real thick kind of brick. So the...this electronic message center sign is...would be...it's basically a larger area than we would typically allow, but given the nature of the existing kind of brick monument, we're gonna consider that sort of more as part of the sign. I think according to the sign code, that wouldn't typically be considered. You would only basically measure the square footage of where the kind of the electronic message center sign is and the St. Alexis Parish. So the electronic message center area is actually larger than the fifty percent we would typically allow by code. So that's kind of one of the variances that's being requested. And then they need a variance for it because they're within a mile of another electronic message center sign. Oh, yeah, but given the nature of like how that, you know, the kind of the brick and how that kind of hefty sign is already existing there, we thought this was a reasonable request and looked pretty good. And it is actually smaller than typical EMC signs that come through for approval. So Village Board, or I'm sorry, Community Development Commission unanimously approve this one four-zero.
Any questions from our Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance approving variations for the new above-ground accessory gas product storage tanks at eleven fifty-one North Ellis Street. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second?
Second.
Motion, and a second, we have discussion. Curtis?
Yeah, so this is Helgett Gas Products. They're in a neighbor community in search for...they need a new space. They got this space on Ellis. So these are five large tanks that exceed our height requirements for basically accessory structures. And then they need some variances based on how we would typically screen these, because you're essentially not gonna screen thirty-foot tanks. So there's two...there's one thirty-seven and a half-foot tank, there's two thirty-five...or maybe two thirty-seven and a half-foot tanks, a thirty-five-foot tank, and a thirty-three-foot tank. These are gonna hold compressed gas and liquid bulk, so it's CO2, oxygen, helium, nitrogen. This is a really well-run company. They basically take the gas from these larger tanks and fill up smaller tanks in the facility. The facility's at the end of this. It's a multi-tenant industrial, backs up to Willow Creek. It's...so they won't actually encroach anymore onto Willow Creek. They'll stay on sort of the existing footprint of the back of that lot. And then all the kind of other buildings around them. So they're already at the back of this property, then they back up to Willow Creek, and that's in Elgro Village on the other side of Willow Creek there. And then the building to the north is actually the back of all those buildings, too. So this unit is actually kind of hidden back here, and we actually feel this is kind of a good spot, if anything, for these tanks, where they're sort of at the back of this multi-tenant, and then kind of back up to a bunch of other backs of buildings. So although they are, you know, quite significant in size and, you know, larger than we would typically see for this type of request, we felt confident that this was a good user, and these tanks were safe and kind of hidden back there. So CDC recommended unanimously to approve this five-zero.
Any questions from our Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under finances, a resolution determining an estimate of real property taxes to be levied by the Village of Benserville, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the portion of the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
You have a motion?
There are a second?
Second.
Being a motion, and a second, we have discussion.
So this is not necessary tonight, but I like to follow the Illinois Truth in Taxation Act because it gives a level of transparency when we do one of the most important things that we do, which is set a property tax levy. So the good news, and I have only good news tonight, is that the budget we are proposing, the levy that we plan to adopt on December twelfth, will be a zero percent property tax increase. That comes from the Village Board's direction, that we need to moderate property tax increases because our residents are being taxed too much. So it's not easy to get to this point, but our property tax levy will be a total of five point seven million in twenty-two, and then we're carrying that forward into the twenty-three estimate. So zero percent property tax increase. We will come back for the actual levy on December twelfth.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Two is a resolution receiving and placing on file the Village of Benserville Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, and Management Letter for the Fiscal Year Ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Being a motion, and a second, we have discussion.
Yes, this evening, we have John Wysocki with GW Associates, who is the Village's auditor. I would like to ask John to go to the mic and give a brief overview of this year's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Brief overview, John.
Yes. Thank you for having us once again perform the audit for the Village. The annual comprehensive financial report includes the independent auditor's report, a few pages in on page one. And I like to point out on this that while we help with the preparation of the financial statements, it's actually management's responsibility. Our responsibility is to audit those statements and give our opinion on that, and we did that, and we are expressing, again, unmodified or what we call a clean opinion on the financial statements. After that is management's discussion and analysis, which I encourage you to read. It kind of gives a nice overview and summary of the status of the Village's finances at December thirty-first, as well as the activity for the year. The...on page four is the statement of net position, and it goes on to page five. It shows that the net position at the end of the year for governmental activities was a hundred seven million dollars. For business-type activities, eighty-six million dollars, for a total of a hundred ninety-three million dollars. That is a increase in total from last year of twenty-two million dollars. So as far as government-wide basis, you know, very, very good results there. Then on page seven is the balance sheet, and that shows individual funds. Includes the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the Village, showing a ending fund balance of nineteen point three million. One thing, if you compare it to the prior year, you'll notice that this statement shows the MFT Fund and the Debt Service Fund is part of the non-major funds this year, whereas last year it was broken out separately. Just due to the size of the funds, they didn't really qualify as major funds, but the detailed information about those funds is in the back of the report still. And on page nine, you'll see the general fund had a decrease in net position of seven point six million dollars. However, most of that was due to about a ten million dollar transfer out to other funds, including the Debt Service Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, and Parks and Recreation Fund. Obviously, it's a very long report, so there's a lot of detail, which I won't get into, but overall, you seem to be in a very healthy position. As far as the single audit goes, that is the audit of federal funds, the expenditure of those funds. We give a couple different reports. One is a report on internal control over financial reporting, and that report, if there were any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we would indicate it there. We are not reporting any. There is also then the report on compliance for each major federal program. Again, an unmodified report there. So from what we saw, you complied with the federal requirements. The...there is also a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That shows that you spent about two point six million of federal awards during the year, with the largest part being the Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery Grant of one point seven million dollars. That's the program we audited as a major program. The only other thing I have, and I don't know...I just sent it over this morning, so you may not have received it, so I did bring hard copies, is just a required communication with the Board that we provide every year. We have to specifically say if we had any problems in dealing with management, which we did not. We do talk about any changes in economic policies. There was the implementation of a new pronouncement with regard to leases, where you're now having to record a lease receivable for the leases that you have regarding the ice arena and some space at one of the parks. And then talk about management estimates and so forth. And then it also includes our audit adjustments and any new pronouncements coming up in future years. So I can pass that out.
Yeah, that didn't make the packet. So if I can summarize John Wysocki auditor's speak. Is this a clean audit, as we like to say?
Yes.
This is a clean audit. All right. Did you find any control violations? Control violations being things that would put the Village's financial position at risk?
Yeah, we are reporting no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which would be required to report if we identified something.
And then within this audit are the Village's compiled financial statements, correct?
Yes, yes.
Contrary to this morning, or this earlier public comment, we are providing financial statements to the Village Board, and there are no control violations.
And I just want to mention, too, that the Village did receive, again, the Certificate of Excellence for Financial Reporting from the GFPA, and they plan to submit this report...
See, John, you gotta leave with the good stuff. So the awards, man.
I mean, you can read all two hundred pages if you'd like.
I don't think you'd like me to, no. John, thank you. Working with your team is always a pleasure. It's a well-oiled machine and working between our Finance Department. I know Sharon's not here, but she sings your praises. And so thank you once again. We look forward to another successful audit beginning for two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Board?
No.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Public Works is the ordinance approving easement number five-one-two-nine-nine-zero-one, granting a permanent easement to the Village of Benserville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, for traffic signal equipment at the intersection of Green Street and Franklin Avenue and County Line Road. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
There are second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second. Joe, you have discussion on this?
Yeah, so as part of the Elgin O'Hare Western Access Project, the tollway will be making some improvements to Green Street and Franklin Avenue corridor. Included in this improvements is going to be the creation of a four-way intersection at County Line Road and Green Street, which will be an extra leg leading to the north, which is an entrance into the CP Yard. In order to accommodate the traffic signals and the equipment, and to provide us with the ability to go in there and repair and manage and maintain those street...those traffic signals, an easement was needed. Sioux Line Railroad Company is actually the owner of the property, so they have granted the easement that we need. We worked with the tollway, with our attorneys, to make sure that the Village is protected in this easement. So in front of you today is an ordinance that approves that easement for the Village in the future, and staff does recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is a resolution authorizing execution of Amendment Number One to the Existing Design Engineering Services Agreement with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for the South Industrial Business District Improvements Project for an increase of twenty-three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, resulting in a revised not-to-exceed amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
There are a second?
Second.
There being a motion, and a second, we have discussion. Joe?
Yeah, so as you can see on your screen, the South Industrial Business District is located just north of Grand Avenue. It includes Entry Drive, Bernice Drive, James Street, Judson Street, and William Street. That's kind of the little flag that's up there on your screen. Staff has been working with Baxter and Woodman on a design for a complete infrastructure improvements in this area. We're planning on using a three-million-dollar grant that we received from the DCEO. That's been earmarked for resurfacing and reconstruction along with the remaining costs being generated revenue through an SSA of the properties along this corridor. As we continue with the design, it became evident to include Arthur Court, which is the street just off of Church Road, in this design, and include that in the South Business District project. So we asked Baxter and Woodman for some...a proposal to increase their design to include that. They came back with a twenty-three thousand eight hundred fifty dollar cost. We do agree with that. The increase will take the original contract from two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to two hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. So it's staff's recommendation to approve this additional work.
Just want to add a little bit of...on the financing side of this, this is gonna be an expensive project, so what we're doing is we're going to propose a special service area for these businesses. They would have to decide if they want to go forward with that SSA or not, because that would tie...it would raise their property taxes specifically right here. That's kind of been our plan with the industrial businesses, is not put the increased cost on the residents and keep it with the district that it's providing.
What year is this? Is this for next year or for two thousand twenty-five?
This is gonna be for two thousand twenty-five in our CIP plan.
Any questions from the Board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a final balancing change order number one with Builders Paving LLC for the two thousand twenty-three MFT Residential Street Improvement Project for a decrease of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for a revised final contract amount of one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars, sixty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There are second?
Second.
Being a motion, and a second. Joe, we have discussion.
Yeah, so this project is completed for the year. It included Washington Street resurfacing, as well as some of the streets in the Brentwood area, including John Street, Jaclyn Drive, David Drive, I'm sorry, Diana Court, Pamela Drive, and Gloria Jean Drive. So this project was completed this...earlier this summer. We finished off all of our quantities and landscape work, so we bring to you our final balancing change order. There were four additional unit price items that were included on this project, as well as about seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of deductions on the unit pricing. So it's an actual deduction change order, which I love bringing to you guys every year, of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, the final contract amount, one point one nine-three million dollars. So staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the Board?
Yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the award of a construction contract to Utility Dynamics Incorporated out of Oswego, Illinois, for the two thousand twenty-two CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project, and the not-to-exceed amount of five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
There are second?
Second?
Being a motion, and a second, we have discussion.
Yeah, so this is a two thousand twenty-two project that we proposed to the county for CDBG funding. They pushed it off to two thousand twenty-three, and we will likely be constructing this now in two thousand twenty-four due to the lateness of the HUD funding that became available and some material delays. So the two-two project will be constructed in twenty-four. This project was designed in-house. It's gonna include forty-seven new residential streetlights in two different areas of town. The first one on your screen is in the south area of town. This is gonna include Belmont, Addison, and Center, and then the other areas on the north side of town, which will include Argyle, Twin Oaks, and our Brown Gate subdivision, which is Green Valley, Kevin, Franzen, and Stoneham. So this is a typical residential streetlight program. We'll use the same streetlights we've done elsewhere in town. I will say that this is probably the last community development block grant-funded streetlight program, since we've basically hit every single area that community development block grants apply for. So we're gonna be receiving four hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars of money for this five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollar project. We opened bids on October thirty-first with Utility Dynamics submitting that low bid in the amount of five hundred nine, seven hundred sixty-one dollars. Utility Dynamics has done all seven of our previous projects as a streetlights, so it is our recommendation to approve this contract.
Any questions from our Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fran?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
That's five.
Got that right, Mac?
Yep.
You're Lomax. Motion carries, resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-seven contract with Winkler Services LLC for tree pruning services and the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
There are second?
Second.
Being a motion, and a second, do we have discussion?
That should be LLC, so thank you for pointing that out.
That's why I said it so slowly.
Yep. So the Village performs an annual tree pruning program every year. We have six zones in town, but we combine two of the zones in two different years, so it's a four-year recycling program. Staff performs pruning on fifteen-inch tree diameters and less, while we contract out for those greater than fifteen inches. We went through our last two contracts, four-year contracts, so it was time to renew that contract this year, so we went out to bid for a new contract. We did have two people...or two contractors that submitted bids with Kramer Services LLC submitting the lowest of the two bids. Kramer has done this work for us on the last two contracts, where we're very comfortable with them. The total four-year account amount is one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. There's a breakdown on your screen, and in your packet for each year. There's a breakdown on your screen and in your packet for each year. This helps us budget as well, so we know what the price of these contracts is going to be for the next four years. So I believe we did actually budget before sixty thousand dollars for the next phase, which came in at fifty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. So our numbers are pretty close. This was a small increase off of their unit price items from last year, so we feel comfortable that these prices are good. We are very happy with Winkler, we've got a lot of compliments about how clean they are, how good their trimming is, especially when they get up next to ComEd's tree trimming and it looks really good. So it's our staff recommendation to go ahead and approve this contract with Winkler.
Joe, I didn't ask you about this, what was the deal with the second bid? It was extremely out of line.
They were out of state and we could not figure out why.
They're just seeing if they could be the only bidder and?
They were hoping, I guess, and that would be what we would go with. The unit prices on those were ridiculous, so, yeah.
We had to fly loggers in first class.
To some extent, I'm glad they bid because it gave us the ability to go ahead and award a contract, because if you get some competitive bidding, competitive bidding, we did have another bid. So again, we checked the pricing of Winkler's contracts and their unit pricing based off of last year. There was a small increase, I think it was three or four percent off their prices from last year, so we were comfortable with that.
They're the tree experts.
They are the tree experts and they're nice, bright blue trucks.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. I'm going to screw this word up, I already see it already. Resolution authorizing purchase order to Climate by Design International Corporation for a purchase of one
Desicent.
Desicent wheel for Edge Two and the not-to-exceed amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, discussion, please.
So a desicent wheel is a vital component of a dehumidification system. What it does is actually transfers energy between fresh air and exhaust air in the system. So it's a very vital component of a system. Last year, we replaced two of our three desicent wheels up on the Edge Two facility off of Don Jefferson. This is the last of the desicent wheels that we're proposing to replace for twenty twenty-four. It's brought before you today, we have a twelve to fourteen weekly time on the materials. Climate by Design is the OEM manufacturer of the actual system. They also put in the other two for us last year very successfully, so it is our recommendation to move forward with them on this one. There will be some additional costs that we'll deal with administratively, as it'll be under ten thousand dollars, that will be cranes and things like that that we'll need to actually lift this up onto the roof of the Edge facility.
Okay. Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Under Recreation, a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with Bax Commercial Auctioneers for the purchase of movie theater seats for the Bensville Theater in an amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred one dollars thirty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So usually I come to you and seek authority to buy something. Today I'm doing it a little bit backwards because Frank, do you want to explain the opportunity that presented itself?
So as I like to surf the internet and look for great deals, I came across a movie theater closing that had seats for sale. So I sent my idea over to Evan, I said, we need to bid on these seats. The seats that we bought were brand-new, retailed at five hundred dollars a seat. We got them for an average of thirty-eight dollars a seat. So we bought three hundred of these slightly-used chairs and we are going to kind of start phase two of the movie theater earlier than expected.
So my spending authority is ten thousand dollars, this is the lowest in DuPage County, I'm not asking for it to go up, but there is a provision that if I do spend more than that, I need to come to you right away and say, hey, guys, I spent more than that. We can't return these seats, so we bought them, so I'm seeking authority to ratify the purchase. We do, we have taken delivery of the seats. These were, this is for the movie and for the seats, right?
This is just for the seats.
Just for the seats themselves, okay, because that, the movie came in under, so this is just for the seats. We've taken them, Frank and I are going to do a field trip on Friday to start seeing how we're going to install these things, but they're pretty cool-looking seats.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the resolution approved. Presidential remarks. Before I get bombarded with emails, yes, the president is wearing a T-shirt at the board meeting today. This T-shirt is in honor of Victory Auto Wreckers. As we all know, and I was just actually reading up on it, I'll read it real quick to you guys. Victory Auto Wreckers is a family-owned, three-generation business that has been in the same location since it was founded at the end of World War I, hence the name Victory. So I spoke to Kyle today over at Victory Auto Wreckers, he wants to retire. I'm assuming he got a great offer for his property and he is going to retire at the end of the month. We have plans for Kyle in December. We're going to do a little interview with him and give him some goodies, but we want to kind of wish Kyle and his family a happy retirement. It's been here for generations. Honestly, we don't know who purchased it. We all found out about it on WGN like everybody else. So with that being said, Kyle, you know, congratulations and your family, congratulations. Thank you for being in town for all those years. It was pretty cool seeing him on the news today, the original guy who pulled the door off the car was there. And they did it right for him, so thank you, Kyle, that's kind of why I'm wearing this Victory Auto Wreckers T-shirt. I made the board mad because I didn't buy enough for everybody, but hey. So thanks again, Kyle, and Victory Auto Wreckers, an institution that will be missed. Moving on, the annual holiday magic tree lighting ceremony will be held this Sunday, November nineteenth, beginning at five PM. Festivities will include free commemorative ornaments, free treats, horse-drawn carriage rides, free train rides, a petting zoo and of course, a chance to meet Santa. So please see the village website for more information. The CP KC's Holiday Train is making a stop in Bensville on November twenty-fifth at seven PM. The Holiday Train will be located at Railroad Avenue at York Road. Parking will be extremely limited. If you're coming down, leave early. I think the last time we were here was an hour and something traffic jam just to get down to downtown Bensville from all the surrounding areas. If you're coming at the time and you're parked far away, you're not going to see the show, it's going to be over by the time you walk to it. So please visit the village website for more parking information and the event details. There is still time to purchase senior holiday party tickets. This year's luncheon will be held on December fifteenth at Monty's Elegant Banquet. Doors open at ten AM and food will be served at eleven. Tickets are twenty dollars for residents and registration is required. Tickets will be sold at Village Hall now until December sixth, so please call the senior hotline at six three zero three five zero three four two six for party information. And the Holiday Ice Show will be held on December seventeenth at twelve PM at the Edge Ice Arena. General admission tickets are twelve dollars and it is open to the public. So please see the village website for more details. That will conclude my presidential remarks, is there a village manager's report?
Just building off the Holiday Ice Show, I'm a little biased, but I did hear the cutest four-year-old in Bensonville will be participating in the show, so don't miss that. Vehicle stickers are on sale, I keep saying this, buy them online, save yourself two bucks, that's going smooth down in the finance department. For the holiday closures, we will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-third through the nineteenth for the Thanksgiving holiday. And Republic Service will continue to pick up yard waste through the end of this month, so.
Got a question for you. We're going to be closed Thursday, November twenty-third through November nineteenth, we're going back in time?
We're going back, it's a Back to the Future, I'm not sure. This is a Back to the Future of Thanksgiving. So no, we'll be closing the Thursday and then reopen on the twenty-third, or twenty-fourth, sorry. I don't have the calendar, I did not write these, so I apologize. Visit the village website for Village Hall hours.
On Thanksgiving and the day after, yes, or the day before?
In the Saturday.
So Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Okay. Cool. Reopening Monday. Yeah, so I know there's still a lot of leaves on the trees, Joe and I got to talk about what to do, but yard waste does end right now at the end of November, so we're going to continue to monitor that.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Field of Justice Report? Is there any unfinished business to come before the board today? Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? Is there a need for executive session?
There is none.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion.
Second.
Sure?
Trying to get it out.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.